Ask and they didn't say anything. It was my son though, so.
There it is. I heard it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna call this special meeting of the Select Board with the NPEDC to order at 4:00 P. M.
Do you want to do your roll call first and we can?
We don't normally do roll call, but I will. Don?
Oh.
Tom?
Here.
Matt?
Yeah.
Malcolm? Okay, so we're all here.
Great, and thank you, everyone. This is a joint meeting, as Brooke had said, of both the Select Board and the NPEDC. Let me call this meeting to order because we do have some people on Zoom as well. Christina Jellamy?
Yeah.
Mike Misarelli?
Yeah.
Brooke, you're here again, so you can play dual capacity. Yeah. Wendy Hudson?
Yeah.
Dave Iverson?
Here.
Nat Rol?
Here.
John Kitchener?
Here.
Zoom, and I, do we have anyone else?
Abby. Abby's on Zoom.
Oh, Abby DiMolina?
Here.
And then for staff people, we have Mike Burns?
Here.
Megan Trudell?
Here.
Libby Gibson is here as well. In the audience also is Police Chief Casper and Fire Chief Cranston. Thanks for coming, guys. Appreciate it. Mike, do you want to introduce your team?
Yeah, if it's all right, Mr. Chair, we'll maybe share the slide deck and then we'll go through the introductions of the team as part of the presentation.
Sounds good. Just one more thing, too. You've said the meeting's roughly about an hour and a half long.
Correct.
And just so people are aware, too, there'll probably be questions and answers. We do have to come to a hard stop at 5:45. So just keep that in mind as the clock is ticking.
Understood.
Great, thank you.
So Zach, if you want to share the slide deck, we'll go ahead and get started. And again, thank you all for being here this evening. This joint meeting of the Select Board and NPEDC. For the record, I'm Mike Burns, Transportation Program Manager for the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission of the NPEDC. This is our first of two outreach phases to share key findings and possible safety solutions for addressing safety concerns in Nantucket, and to include these in our safety action plan for Nantucket. Next, please. The intent of this meeting, which is an approximate 90-minute meeting, is to share some background on the action plan, who is on our team, and key findings of recent crash history. We will also share feedback we received from the public about traffic safety. We'll also summarize potential safety countermeasures and gather feedback from you all, local and regional board members throughout this joint meeting. Next, please. Regarding the background and scope for this action plan, next, the Nantucket Regent or the NPEDC won a federal grant and state matching funds in 2023, which totaled $575,000 to develop comprehensive safety action plans for the three rural regions in Massachusetts: Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, and Franklin County. Next, please. All three of the regions are working with a consulting team led by Alex Garbiere of Kittleson and Associates. Also on the team and mainly assisting with us today are Allison Fletcher, Zach Gravel, and Drew Van Hagel. Also joining us is Diana Marsh of the Dream Collaborative. The consultants are working with each of the three rural regions and with Nantucket, and I've been coordinating with the NPEDC and the town's traffic safety staff to review crash analysis in high-crash locations. Next, please. This effort kicked off this past January with initial focus on the crash analysis and filtered and added treatments that were appropriate for and sensitive to each of the regions. We are now a little more than halfway through the development process. Following this joint meeting, our team will be incorporating the feedback that we've received from the public and from you all to develop a prioritized list of projects and programs, which we will then share later in the spring for public review before finalizing this summer. That's the background and the scope. I'll now hand it over to Allison of Nelson and Nygaard and the rest of her team to take you through the approach for ensuring a safe transportation system. And as well as the crash analysis, and as we progress through today's program, we will also have interactive participation in order to be a little more fun with this activity. So take it away, Allison.
Sure. Thanks, Mike. Allison Fletcher here with Nelson Nygaard. This program, the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, is federally funded and follows from what they call a safe systems approach. A traditional approach looks at just preventing crashes. A safe system principle is looking at which crashes are leading to deaths and serious injuries. So we'll focus on that as we get into the discussion of analysis later. It's also looking at behavior and speeding, but in a different way, and understanding that humans make mistakes, they have limitations, and looking at what solutions have the greatest impact in reducing the crashes or reducing the impact of crashes, and looking at collective responsibility, not just one single individual having an impact in the system, but how is the whole system and culture around safety things that are happening today. The next slide talks about just the redundancy of the different measures and lenses for looking at the safe system approach. So this plan is not only looking at the shape of the roads and how to make them safer, which has a reciprocal relationship on the way that people behave in the roads, but also the speeds at which people are traveling, the types of vehicles they're traveling, dissecting all the data to look at that, also looking at the people and the culture, what are the policies in the place where we're working, and the post-crash care. So after an incident happens, how are people then connected to care? What's the timeline between that? How are people involved? What happens after that crash with caretaking people after the outcomes of that as well? Using all these different safety measures helps us prevent fatal and life-changing crashes by looking at this redundancy system and hopefully catching these crashes before they're happening and having converse impacts. On the next slide, this just talks a little bit about the approach to the project itself. As Mike mentioned with the schedule earlier, we've been doing a lot of analysis with the factors of the crashes. We're also looking at what potential universe of designs and countermeasures could be used for such high-crash streets and intersections on Nantucket. We're looking at policies and traffic laws, kind of auditing those, coming up with that later on in the safety action plan process. And we're working to prioritize a set of potential projects to be implemented so that Nantucket is positioned for grants, whether those be from the state and/or the federal government, where there is more money available as part of this program heading forward. Eventually, we'll be coming back with you with a draft plan to formalize and move towards an adoption as part of that. I'm gonna pass it to the next part, which is about warm-up polling. So we want to make sure that the mentimeter system is working on your end. So our first question is asking from those that are on the Select Board and the NPEDC, does anyone in your household have a disability or travel with a wheelchair or mobility device? Mike should have distributed a QR code or a link earlier today with a code to get into this, so we see some people have figured it out. Two people have participated so far. So yes or no, does anyone in your household have a disability or travel with a wheelchair or mobility device? I'll give you maybe 10 more seconds to put in your input here. We definitely need more responses from the group. Hopefully, it's working on your end.
Anybody having trouble? Okay.
I think we have about half of the responses so far. Is that correct, Mike?
It sounds about right.
We have seven so far.
Brooke, you all having issues?
Yep.
No.
Okay, I think it's just getting everyone logged in with. I'm sorry.
Any more questions from the group? I think we still need a few more responses on this one. It looks like we're sorting it out.
This is pretty fancy. I was about to tease you and say that it doesn't have any propane involved.
Look up to a stove.
We've got the culture of shared responsibility here.
Give it time.
Right. That's where you should be. Once you answer the question, the presenter will change the slides.
Yeah, so after you've completed it, it'll have kind of like a holding room.
Abby and John, are you getting it okay on your end?
Yes.
Yep.
Just blended.
Okay. We have 11 responses so far. I think we probably can move forward, right, Mike? Just trying to get a read from the room.
Yeah, Allison, I think we got a couple of people still working through it, but are we? You're good? Mike, you're good? Dave, you're good? Okay, I think we're good. I think maybe we go on to the next and.
Okay, great. So the next slide is gonna, the next set of slides is gonna go through some trade-off questions, just giving your gut feeling on, you know, which is a greater concern to you when it comes to traveling around Nantucket? Traveling faster or traveling safer? Which is the greatest concern to you? You pick one, and it's gonna give us a ranked composite of the scores of those that are voting. We have five responses so far.
We have 12 responses, I think, today, so I think we're good.
All right, so the next question is a trade-off between space for vehicles and dedicated space for people walking and biking, which is a greater concern to you. You can put your menti poll in now.
Dare I have a chance to respond to that? Okay, I think we're good.
All right, so the next one, which of these is a greater concern to you? Better road conditions or more road capacity?
There we go. I'll look up to 14, so I don't think there's any issues with logging in.
Yeah, so I think we're probably good for the next one. So the next one is about, this is the last poll for now, which of these is your greater concern to you? Reliable driving times or facilities for other modes? All right, just need a couple more responses from the group here. I think we were getting up to 14 before. So landing right in the middle. All right, well, thanks for indulging us. We'll be doing some more polling coming up later in the presentation as we give you more information. I'm gonna pass it to Drew to talk about the analysis that's been done and the historical crash trends and high-injury network from the recent analysis.
Hi, thanks, Allison. My name is Drew Van Hagel and I'm Senior Principal at Nelson Nygaard. I've seen frozen out of my view. There we go. And I'm going to overview quickly that which was summarized in a memo which we delivered in August. Firstly, I want to say we've been on the island doing site visits and engagement, really lucky to be gathered together with your staff from the Public Works and the Fire and the Police Department when we were there in July, specifically looking at locations of concern. And then, so again, I'm gonna provide a quick overview of a detailed crash report, starting with some general, starting by describing to you the general trends. The crashes on the island are substantially higher in the summer midday period, and single-vehicle crashes account for the most fatal and severe crashes. With respect to the question of vulnerable road users, about 5% of total crashes involve people walking and biking, but 21% of reported injuries involve those types of parties. These collisions with people walking or biking are most likely to occur at intersections, and 85% of them occur in densely settled or thickly settled areas. We took a look at a high level of the crashes distributed across the island and did what we call a network screening. Crashes are more frequent in and around the town rather than in the rural areas, but there is a concentration of crashes and transitions between more thickly settled and thinly settled areas and on roadway curves. We did, we mapped the intersections and corridors experiencing the highest number of crashes over the five years we analyzed between 2018 and 2022. On this map, you can see that the intersections are numbered from 1 to 20, which are, is a numbering system that relates the intersections with the most crashes to the top, the 20th-most crash locations. Some of the intersections experiencing the highest number of crashes include Old South Road at the intersection of Milestone and Orange, Nobedear Farm Road at Milestone Road, and Milestone Road at Pulvis. So these are the red dots that you see on this map, and again, there's a detailed table of these findings in the August memo. With respect to the orange lines, these are the corridors or the street segments that are experiencing the top number of crashes, top 1 through 10 crashes by length. And after we did this kind of overview of where are crashes happening, we tiered the high-crash corridors based on the level of fatal and serious injury crashes happening on them to create what we call a high-injury network. As Allison described, this type of analysis or safety work that we do today really looks at the places where the most fatal and severe injury crashes are happening because the economic and social and emotional costs of those are very high, and if we can prevent those from happening, they have a bigger impact. It has a bigger impact on the community. So on Nantucket, the high-injury network has 9.5% of the total crashes, but 50% of those fatal and severe injury crashes. This information helps us identify the places where infrastructure investments can make the biggest difference in preventing future crashes. Sample locations on this, on these two tiers of, on the top tier of corridors include Sparks Avenue from Atlantic Avenue to Orange, Old South Road from Milestone to Arrowhead Drive, and Bartlett Road from Raceway Drive to Surfside Road. We also looked at the speed data. You have an unusual situation, and as much as you're really capitalizing on collecting locally available data, which are very instrumental and useful for the safety action planning, in this case, Mike and his team has speed data that can be shared with us. So we did find, using this local data, that we could understand more fully where there's an overlap of crashes and excessive speed. We have several graphs, but we're just providing this one as an overview. So I mean, I'm gonna tell you what it shares with us. As you can see here on the graph of speeds on Matikit, people are generally driving at or below the posted speed limit, which is that solid horizontal line that's black with some red overlap, which is the actual 85th percentile speed, that speed at which 85% of the drivers are traveling at or below, slower than. But you can see that excessive speed is happening on Matikit, especially in the off-season. And open, and this data is important to us because open lanes promote speeding, which contributes to traffic fatalities, injuries, and property and vehicle damage. So we look for situations where excessive speed is possible and look for design interventions that can bring the speeds down all times of day, regardless of the decisions people make and the level of congestion. This diagram here is very typical for our work. It describes on the left a speedometer speed that shows the distance which a vehicle travels at each of those speeds, from the time it takes the driver to think and react to something in front of them, and then the distance a vehicle travels while a driver is actively braking. So the faster people are driving, the longer time it takes and distance it takes to come to a stop, making it impossible in some situations to stop before hitting the thing that is in front of the excessively speeding driver. So to translate this a little bit further, if a pedestrian is at 100 feet away, even at a speed at 30 miles per hour, that's not enough time for a driver to react and avoid hitting the pedestrian should they not be able to move. And at 30 mile, at that 30 mile per hour speed, if a pedestrian is hit, there's a 50% chance of that person dying or being seriously injured. So vehicle collisions at this speed are, vehicle collisions at this speed results in moderate injury outcomes for the people involved with them, especially the vulnerable person outside of the car. And at higher speeds, you can see that 50 mile per hour speedometer indicator, the risks are even higher. And so reflecting back on that previous slide, notably on Matikit, which we reviewed, where there are speeds in excess of 50 miles per hour, the chance of pedestrian fatality or injury in the event of a crash is higher, and we can also expect moderate or more vehicle damage. So wanted to talk about, this section of the next slide, next few slides talks about common crash factors, which are our attempts to understand not only where the crashes are occurring, but what other factors compound their occurrence. This map illustrates the places where distracted driving was documented. 26% of the crashes on Nantucket involve distraction. 70% of that 26% involve cell phone use. And this is more documented at a higher level than the other safety plan we're doing concurrently, which is that on Martha's Vineyard. Six fatal and serious injury crashes involve distracted driving, and 39 led to some level of injury. And the concentration of crashes involving distraction are along Matikit, Orange, Monahansett, and Sparks. This next map illustrates where crashes involving deer strikes, deer strikes are concentrated. 8% of crashes on the island involve animals. Almost all of these crashes are with a deer. This is similar to the level of crashes involving animals and deer strikes on Martha's Vineyard. Three of these crashes led to injuries, and the other ones were property damage only. And these crashes involving animal strikes are concentrated on Milestone, Tom Nevers, Pulvis, and Hummock Road. We also want to focus on the crashes that involve people walking and bicycling because they don't have the level of protection of people inside of a vehicle, and as you can see, the injury rates are high. As we talked about earlier, the injury rates can be higher depending upon the speed of the involvement. So 5% of the total crashes on Nantucket involve the person walking or bicycling, but 21% of reported injurious crashes involve the person walking or bicycling. Three fatal and serious injury crashes during this time period, which we assessed between 2018 and 22, and 27 total injurious crashes. And these crashes involving people walking and biking are spread across the island and most common mid-island. And now we have another mentimeter poll for you to contribute your impressions of this overview, or if anything surprised you due to its presence or absence in our presentation. No surprises. Well, if there are no surprises, in the interest of time, we are, we would be, we would benefit. There we go. High speeds on Matikit. Thank you for your contributions. Give it another 30 seconds or so. And also note throughout the presentation, if there isn't an opportunity to discuss something fully, we encourage you to be in contact with Mike after the meeting for anything that we need to clarify. I think we'll move on due to the kind of open-ended nature of the question. I'm going to turn it over to Allison.
Thanks.
Sorry?
Yes.
Thank you.
And as Drew mentioned, you can continue adding to that as you're thinking about things that you're typing up. We wanted to talk a little bit about just the engagement aspects of this progress project, so talking to the community. The objective data is one piece of this, understanding your experience and the qualitative side of things is another. This process started with stakeholder engagement in summer of 2024. We visited the high-crash locations to look at them in person, understand them through the staff's point of view and the stakeholders' point of view, looking at those, as Drew mentioned earlier. And then we also opened up a public engagement process this fall, which you might have heard of and/or participated in. The survey was open last month. We had over 1,200 responses. We did a poll of these a week ago so that we could get the data in around the holidays, so we're gonna be presenting results from the initial 1,100. And then we also had an online engagement map, which got over 2,200 dots added to it. So on the next slide, this just talks a little bit about who participated in the survey. So from this initial cut of respondents, 53% of the people that took the survey were year-on residents, 42% were part-time residents, 5% were visitors. They also told us a little bit about how they travel. Do they travel with car only? The orange slice and the pie charts here on the left for year-on residents, year-on residents report using a car primarily, 42%. Using a combination of modes at 52% of those that responded. Whereas part-time residents use a car, report using a car slightly less at 21%. Report being a bit more multimodal and using all of the ways of getting around at 70%. On the next slide, diving into this a little bit more, we asked people about their perceptions of safety by mode, keeping in mind that people are pretty multimodal and those that took the survey in the first place. But how do they feel about how safe public transit is versus how safe biking is on the island itself? And very interestingly, people feel more confident that it's very safe or somewhat safe in the green or blue for public transit and driving alone on the island, kind of middle of the road for those that might be walking on the island, less safe for those that might be operating with a wheelchair or using a motorcycle, kind of getting back to the statistics Drew showed earlier in terms of prevalence and studies related to that. And less safe generally for those that might be biking on the island. The next slide looks at a little bit of just demographics about where people feel safe. We asked questions such as, do you feel safe driving in your area? Do you like walking and biking in your area? Do you feel it's safe? What about near schools? What about near you in your neighborhood for kids walking and biking? Or near you for people that might be older adults or people with disabilities that are traveling? So this is kind of rank ordered between those, but generally, people feel safe in their neighborhood for themselves, driving, walking, or biking, but when it comes to thinking about kids, older adults, areas near schools, or people with disabilities, people have larger concern with disagreeing or disagreeing more strongly about whether it feels safe to them in those areas. On the next slide, looking at, so what are we gonna do about safety priorities? We had people do a relative ranking where one was a higher priority, six was a lower priority for six different categories of operator behavior. So people, you know, driving irresponsibly, people driving aggressively, those came up a little bit higher in the relative ranking in composite scoring and things such as the roadways themselves for the roadway quality, the safety for certain modes, so people walking and biking and visibility came down a little bit lower in the relative priorities. So a lot of emphasis on behavior, education, and culture in what we received from that particular set of questions in the survey. On the next slide, we have a just initial cut of some of what we heard about from the online mapping. There was four different prompts for people to use these. As we mentioned, there were over 2,000 responses. Over 50% of the comments related to people reporting near-miss incidents, like, oh, I almost got in a crash there, but it wasn't documented. That's very helpful input for us to know for what they call systemic safety outlooks and understanding how can we anticipate and prevent crashes that are happening that may not statistically be on paper yet in terms of incidents. Many of those were also still falling within a tenth of a mile of the high-crash corridors or intersections that were documented as part of our analysis. On the next slide, there's just a few more, just initial impressions for places where people felt they had challenges with safety due to the roadway layout and conditions. What we thought was interesting, just doing an initial look at this data, is that these are pretty distributed across the island. It's not any particular village or area or near the ferry port where people are the most concerned with it. They've had issues, you know, all across the island. And then on the next slide, similarly, places where they'd like to see safety improved through infrastructure or redesigns, also pretty distributed across the island, though there are a couple of spots that people care a lot about, which we'll talk about more when we talk about some specific locations later in the presentation. I'm gonna pass this to Zach now to talk a little bit about just how this relates to where we're headed with the potential tool of treatments that could be deployed here.
Thanks, Allison. Just wanted to spend a few minutes with everyone to talk about some of the proven safety countermeasures that might come into play as we think about what the final plan looks like. I just want to, as we get into this, caveat by saying we're thinking about this in a context-sensitive way. We want to understand what's appropriate for the island and what makes sense for you all as we're thinking about what recommendations we might make in the final plan. And so what we're thinking about is what different roadway types exist on Nantucket and how those interact with your land use context. And the team came up with three different types. We came up with village roads, town access roads, and rural roads. And we have an example of each of those on the slide for you. But what we're seeing is distinct different types of crashes in each of those different types of roads across the island. And your sort of core downtown area, we're seeing lots of sideswipe crashes as opposed to on some of those town acc. as opposed to on some of those town access roads, more head-on and rear-end collisions. And that's where a lot of those distracted driving crashes were concentrated. As you get further and further away from your more built-up areas into the rural part of the island, we're seeing more and more single-vehicle crashes, head-on crashes, and a lot of speeding. So just trying to think about as we start to tailor what countermeasures might make sense for those different contexts, thinking about the types of roads that we're working in and the broader land use context as well. And so what we've come up with, and there's a lot on this slide, but I am going to go one by one through each of these, so don't feel like you have to memorize it right now, is a list of potential countermeasures that might work at different locations across the island. Each of these are going to address different types of crashes and different factors that we're seeing. But all of these have proven safety benefits that we've seen from guidance from the Federal Highway Administration and other nationally-recognized sources. So we're working with a list of things that we know works. We just need to make sure that we're tailoring them to the appropriate locations on the island. So as I said, I'm going to go through one by one. This is going to be a bit of a speed round, but what I will say is we're going to come back to these and poll all of them for you all for your support level for each of these. And as you go through these, feel free to either jot down notes as we go, just that when we come back to these a little bit later in the presentation, you feel ready to offer some feedback on them. We'll start with roundabouts. I think many of you are familiar with roundabouts and have seen them on the island. You might be less familiar with what you see in the graphic on the slide, which is a modern spiral roundabout. Roundabouts have proven safety countermeasures. The most beneficial part is that they're really effective at reducing fatal and serious injury crashes. And at the same time that they have a lot of safety benefits, they also have really great vehicle throughput outputs. And so there is a benefit here that could also reduce congestion at some of your most congested intersections on the island, where you might consider implementing a roundabout in lieu of a stop-controlled intersection. Another thing that we look at at intersections is realigning them. We really want intersections to the extent that we can to be predictable places where there is uniform flow of traffic, where folks that are coming up to the intersection know what is expected of them and know how other operators on the road are going to act in relation to them. So making sure that the intersection geometry and the alignment is as predictable as we can will reduce turning speeds and allow for safer movements of vehicles through the intersection. We also think about things like access management, which is the practice of either closing off some of the approaches or curb cuts that might be complicating an intersection and creating confusion for drivers or just sort of putting medians in the center of the road or something that prevents turning movements from the main line. And really, what we're trying to do is simplify the intersection for the folks that are using it, particularly for those who might be vulnerable roadway users, and just make that experience as predictable as possible for everyone. Same thing for dedicated turn lanes. We're trying to make sure that if folks are making turning movements on or off the main line of the road, that other folks that are on the road know that that is their intention. I can imagine that folks are perhaps familiar with what happens when someone slams on their brake, throws on the directional, or maybe doesn't throw on their directional and makes a turn out of nowhere. Having a turn lane can allow you to have a little bit more predictability with where cars are going, provide some additional queuing space for turning vehicles, which can reduce congestion, and is really helpful for some of those stop-controlled intersections. A consideration that we have to think about with this, though, is as we widen that roadway out, it does increase the crossing distance for people that are walking and biking and increases their exposure. So just a trade-off there. Another thing we think about when we start to think about things like road departure crashes or folks are driving off the road or crossing the center line and crashing into other vehicles head-on is looking at rumble strips or some sort of other tactile reinforcement to folks that they need to stay in their lane. Rumble strips are really effective for those runoff-road crashes and for single-vehicle crashes and have a relatively low implementation cost. We can combine those with other treatments to improve visibility at nighttime for folks that might be unfamiliar with the roads of Nantucket, some of the winding roads, and just help keep the people within their lane. On a similar note, wider edge lines, these are becoming increasingly common with the advent of autonomous vehicles and self-driving cars, just giving drivers something, a cue on the side of the road for where they need to be. The wider that that can be visually, the more effective it can be for keeping people, again, within their lane and from driving off the road, relatively inexpensive to implement and something that has a demonstrable safety impact. As we think about approaching what might be an unexpected intersection, so as you're getting out further and further into the more rural parts of the island where people might be not expecting an intersection to pop up, and then it does, transverse rumble strips, which are rumble strips that run perpendicular to the flow of travel. So as you're driving straight ahead, not departing from your lane, just doing what you need to be doing within your lane, it's just alerting you that there's a changing roadway context up ahead, whether it's you need to slow down, you need to come to a stop. This could be an effective way to let folks know that there's something up ahead that they need to clue back in on, particularly if they might be distracted or just sort of used to driving in a certain way in a certain place. The next two are talking about how we can effectively separate out your more vulnerable modes from general roadway traffic. So how we can get bikes and pedestrians into safe and dedicated facilities, particularly high-comfort facilities for them across the island that are appropriate for folks of all ages and abilities. I think we saw in that public engagement response that folks generally feel pretty safe themselves doing biking and walking across the island, but maybe less so for their kids or for someone who might be older in their life. And so bike paths and side paths can be a really effective way to provide that high-comfort facility for folks. Same thing for shared-use paths. The only distinction we're making here is just that vertical delineation, that space, whether it's a grass patch or a fence, something that separates the path itself from the road. Talk about median barriers a little bit. Median barriers, as you have implemented very recently on the island, again, prevent folks from crossing over the center line and prevent head-on collisions. They're typically more appropriate in locations where there's not going to be a lot of turning movements, where you have limited access needs or where you would desire for there to be less turning movements and want to combine this with an access management-type strategy. And, you know, we want to think about if we're going to do this systemically, just understanding where those traffic volumes are and then tailoring this to the crash history that we see to really head-on, head off some of those head-on collisions. At a higher level, I think what we saw earlier in the presentation is that speed is really a significant factor when it comes to making our roads safer across the island. And speed reduction is a really important way that we can reduce fatal and serious injury crashes. Lower speeds, as we know, are going to be more advantageous in the event of a collision for people that are outside of a vehicle and for people that are inside of a vehicle. And generally lowering the speed limit just in and of itself is a relatively low-cost intervention. What I will say is it needs to be effectively paired with things like education and enforcement and engineering to actually be effective and to have the benefit of actually, in practice, reducing people's speeds as opposed to just posting a lower speed limit and still seeing people maintain their similar behavior on the road. And so one way that we can think about that is just educating folks with things like speed feedback signs. These can be an effective way to just make sure that drivers are aware of how quickly they're going on the road and just to make sure that they're cognizant of what the posted speed limit is. And if we're, you know, if we're able to reduce folks' speeds, that can be, again, an effective way to reduce the severity of crashes. But there are other things that we can do that are outside of what we would do on the physical infrastructure within the road, within policies and programs that we can, and that the island has already, for that, for a matter of fact, started to implement. And so I just wanted to talk about a few of those. We won't necessarily poll your support on all of these. This is more of an FYI so that you know that there is already important safety work that's being done on the island in addition to some of the physical infrastructure improvements that the island has already been making. So just to go through all these really quickly, you all have a traffic calming speed hump program, and that can be a really effective way to calm traffic and slow down speeds on neighborhood and local roads. Just making sure that if folks, particularly on roads that are high-cut-through streets, that the community is able to implement those things and make their neighborhood a little bit safer. I will note that getting community support can sometimes be a challenge for these sorts of programs. So thinking about ways to broaden that and make it more of a systemic treatment can be effective as well. Low-speed vehicles, again, going back to the theme of speed, low-speed vehicles by their very nature reduce the speeds at which they're traveling on the road and have proven to be also safe ways to get around. Nantucket is, you know, incorporating this into the municipal fleet. I'm sure you also have folks that are owning and operating these privately, and they are, you know, an environmentally friendly, quieter, you know, convenient option for folks to get around, particularly on an environment like Nantucket. Folks are also starting to use e-bikes more and more. And so making sure that folks are aware of what the rules and regulations are around those, particularly as it comes to the paths across the island. There's an e-bike sticker program that's in place on the island just to make sure that folks are aware of what the classification system is and where they should and shouldn't be using those bikes. Similarly, for something like the Brain Bucket program, making sure that folks are aware of safe cycling practices, encouraging helmet use. You know, it's going to take a whole suite of things that we do altogether to make safety improvements. And so things like this, in combination with infrastructure improvements, really can pay dividends, just boosting that education and that awareness. And so at this point, I am going to turn it over. We're going to talk a little bit about some of these countermeasures, less in theory and more in actual space and place on the island. And so I'll turn it over to Allison and Mike to do a little bit of that.
Thanks, Zach. I did want to kind of underscore and transition that the universe of countermeasures that Zach just went through are not, you know, the comprehensive suite of everything. These are some that are rising to the top. And similarly, we're going to look at some locations on the next slide. I'm going to kind of introduce you to what we're going to look through at each location, but also recognizing that this is not all of the locations of concern on the island. There are just places where you've done study over and over, where there's been past recommendations. There are other locations of concern also coming up, but we kind of just wanted to, you know, look through this lens of safety countermeasures and trends to understand and revisit each of those areas. Look at the crash-type locations, learn what tools have been proven to reduce those particular trends or factors that are happening, review some of the prior concepts, and then we'll pull up the mentimeter again to poll your feedback at each of them. Here we go. So, yeah, as I mentioned, this is how we're going to walk through each of the locations. There is also going to be this table of roughly sixteen different potential countermeasures that tend to map and align with the types of crash factors and contributing factors that are happening at each of these locations. So you can consider which are going to be most effective at those particular locations based on the trends that we're seeing. So for example, the first location that we're going to look at is at Four Corners, at Surfside Sparks. There have been some improvements for safety already made at this location recently, and there's been many studies and proposals as well. When we did the online engagement, we found that a hundred and twenty people made comments on this particular location in terms of safety concerns or wanting to see changes. Thirty people specifically recommended a roundabout. Twelve people also added a pin here for having been involved in a near-miss crash. We also pulled a quotation from the survey. Somebody said this is the single worst intersection on the island, but it should be the safest, given the location and the context of the other things that are around this particular intersection. On the next slide, this is pulling down into the like metadata of the actual crash analysis. What were the contributing factors, the types and manners of things that might have been involved? These are not mutually exclusive. These are things that were just involved in the incidents that have happened here. Some of it's coming from improper turning, failure to yield when they're supposed to yield to another vehicle. It could be a rear-end collision. It was also documented as some vehicles are running into fixed objects outside of the roadway. And there's also been a fair number of collisions involving people walking and biking in that area. So in the table of potential tools on the right, the orange ones are all the different sets of different things that could potentially be applied here. You could have more separation of modes through where sidewalks and/or bikeways are put through the intersection. A roundabout is a proven countermeasure to some of these intersection and/or roadway realignments, providing things that the roadway is accessing the area or within the area, changing the speed limit, applying different forms of rumbles, as Zach was walking through earlier, having wider edge lines and daylighting, i.e. improving the sightlines at the particular intersection. All could have a potential application here. So just wanted to raise those for edification as we think about what we do with the past studies and recommendations that have been there. I'm going to actually pass it to Mike next to just jog your memory of what some of the recent proposals have been here.
Thank you. I'm sure you're all familiar with this intersection, and a lot of you are familiar with the history of the studies of this intersection. It hasn't been done once. Improvements were initially recommended as the two thousand and three Mid-Island Area Plan, the two thousand and five Mid-Island Area Traffic Study. There was a conceptual design exercise in two thousand and eight. Preliminary design was restarted in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, but however, these things stalled and were not advanced during the pandemic in early two thousand and twenty. Next, please. In February of this year, the boards agreed to restart the project. The consulting team that had been working on this is trying to find time in their schedule to restart the project. In order to gauge what you all think, we still would like to advance, whether you would like to still advance this option, please let us know whether you support, don't support, or need more information on this project. And I guess you can go ahead and open the poll there. And it looks like everyone generally supports this or needs a little bit more information. So didn't seem like there was a lot of opposition. So we'll move on to the next location. Allison?
Yep. So at Surfside and Bartlett is the next location with some product history that we wanted to review. In the online engagement, there were thirty-two comments added to this intersection. Eight people suggested that they think that this should be a roundabout. Five people reported near miss incidents. And someone also indicated that this particular intersection is so bad, they avoid it by cutting through on other side streets frequently. In the actual crash typing itself, a lot of the things that are happening here are rear-end collisions, angle collisions, those involving a cyclist, and similar failure to yield or obey the traffic signs at the intersection. There's also a very similar set of potential tools which could be applied here, intersection or roadway realignments, roundabouts could resolve this collection of crash manners, traffic control, i.e., you know, just changing the way that people share space as they approach the intersection through a tool itself. Having shared-use paths, having transverse rumble strips and/or dedicated turn lanes in this area could all be potential tools to apply here. On the next slide, I'll pass it to Mike to talk just a little bit about the background and history to this particular project.
Thanks, Allison. And you all might recall that funding for land and design for a roundabout was approved at the two thousand and fourteen and the two thousand and sixteen annual town meetings. There were subsequent local concerns about roundabouts near schools. A three-way stop had since been implemented. This does create stopping, queuing, and delays along Surfside Road. Next, please. To gauge whether the boards still would like to advance this option, please let us know whether you support, do not support, or need more information on this project. Seems to have not as much support, just a slim bit of not supporting, but majority supporting or need more information about this. So perhaps this is an intersection for a future meeting as well. Move on to the next intersection.
Allison? The next intersection here is Surfside, Maya Comet, and Surfside, confusing with the way that this is, you know, kind of a four-way intersection, kind of not in the way that there's a wiggle there. We sat at this intersection for a while observing how it functions, especially because there's also the side path there and where there... Some people do island courtesy and yield to each other, and this leads to some confusion because it can be inconsistent. Year-round residents remarked in the survey that this area is always really difficult to navigate. There were thirty-five comments added to this intersection online. Many people suggested that it should be a four-way stop, and many people reported having near-miss incidents here due to some of the confusion in the navigation at this intersection. When we go into the crash typing, the primary crash factors here are angle collision. So, you know, cars hitting at a strange angle next to each other, failure to yield or obey the traffic signs, just a reinforcement of the fact that there is some confusion and navigation at this intersection. There was also failure to keep in your lane. There were some head-on collisions. And also, there were some speeding involved at this intersection. It's one of those places where you might be traveling at a large clip, heading up to the intersection, and then surprisingly, people are stopping when they might not need to stop to yield to others. Some of the types, trends, and tools that could be applied here could be traffic calming, could be a form of traffic control, transverse or longitudinal rumble strips, realigning or narrowing the intersection or the roadway itself or creating more visibility at the intersection itself. And I'll pass it back to Mike to talk about some project recommendation history there.
Thank you. And this has been an intersection of recent concern. And as part of a two thousand and eighteen South Shore Road traffic study that was... And as part of a 2018 South Shore Road traffic study that was related to area developments, a mini roundabout or a four-way stop were both recommended. Next, please. We'll have two polling options here. The first is for the mini roundabout option. To gauge whether the boards would like to support this option, please let us know whether you support, don't support, or need more information about a mini roundabout at this location. So it looks like there's 13 there. A lot of more, a lot of folks requesting more information about that option. So that's that's good to know that there's at least support or some concern about wanting to learn more. We'll go on to the next option, which I believe is a polling for a four-way stop. Yeah, that was corrected, a four-way stop. So to gauge whether the boards support this option, please let us know whether you support, don't support, or need more information. And it looks like we have, it's either that, well, that's split. So that's going to be a fun conversation to have after this meeting. Moving on to the next location. Allison?
Yep. So the next location we're going to look at is Old South and Fairgrounds. I believe this is the area we've done a couple pilots before. Somebody that is a seasonal or part-time resident noted this is notoriously bad, especially in the summer season for traffic and delays in this area. In the online engagement where you see 52 comments, many people suggested a roundabout here, and also some people reported near miss incidents, six people did. On the next slide, breaking down the crash typing in terms of what was reported in the crashes the past five years. Thirty percent involved an angle collision, 30% involved a rear-end collision. More than 20% involved failure to yield or obeying the traffic design, and 15% involved lane departures. So the tools that could help resolve some of those behaviors and manners involve intersection realignments, median barriers in the approaches to the intersection, some of these things that Zach walked through earlier, daylighting for visibility, multiple types of rumble strips, roundabouts, having some form of traffic control, having wider edge lines could all have some potential beneficial impact here in terms of reversing some of those fatal and severe injuries. On the next slide, Mike's going to talk a little bit about what's been studied here before.
As part of the 2018 Old South Road corridor study, a roundabout and other amenities were recommended for this intersection to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists. Next, please. In order to gauge support for whether this project is still favored by the different boards, please let us know whether you support, don't support, or need more information. And it looks like that one's a little bit more favored than the Maya Comet and Surfside Surfside Drive intersection. So that's good to know. Moving on to the next location.
The next location to review is Fairgrounds, Surfside, and South Shore. There were 17 comments in the online map added at this location. Five people suggested that this should become a four-way stop. Three people reported near miss incidents. People reported some inconsistencies in the behaviors of how people approached this intersection, that they just don't stop, but they roll right through it. So people reflecting some behavioral concerns when it comes to the way that people operate at this intersection. When we break down the actual crash typing itself, there's a very high percentage of crashes that involve people walking and biking at this intersection as well as failure to yield or obey the traffic signs, kind of reflecting back the oral, you know, comments that we got in the survey in terms of just some confusion in the control of the intersection. There was also some comments, sorry, there was some typing data about there was angle collisions and rear-end collisions here. The suite of tools that could be applied here involve roundabouts, intersection realignments, dedicated turn lanes, having dedicated facilities for walking and biking in the area, having traffic control, transverse rumble strips, and daylighting for visibility at the intersection. And I'll pass it back to Mike to talk about the project history here as well.
Sure. And again, related to the 2018 South Shore Road traffic study related to area developments, as well as a subsequent study, the Our Island Home Traffic Impact Study. Both of those reports did recommend a roundabout for this location. Next, please. In order to gauge whether that option is supported, please let us know whether you support, don't support, or need more information about a roundabout at the Fairgrounds, Surfside, South Shore Road location. There we go. And it looks like that was a little less favorable than the Old South at Fairgrounds Road intersection. So thank you for that. Moving on to the corridors. Allison?
Sure. So Old South Road had a lot of comments in the online engagement. 143 occurred along this particular road. There was mention in terms of opportunities for redesign. People requested having turning lanes, having medians, having bike paths, repaving and or having other network connections for this particular road. There were 28 people that indicated they've experienced a near miss incident along this corridor. And many people who added comments such as that there's a daily event of traffic backup here, year-round, doesn't matter about the season. And there's some issues with people stopped from different areas in terms of those queues. In the actual typing along this corridor, many of those incidents involve rear-end collisions, angle collisions, failure to yield or obey the traffic signs, or collision with deer. Some of the tools that could be applied include access management, so controlling where people can go in or out, or the directionality of particular intersections, intersection realignments, roundabouts, traffic control, transverse rumbles, changing the speed limit, daylighting, or having dedicated turn lanes at some of those areas where there are delays. And I, we're going to pass it back to Mike to talk about some of the corridor study history.
Sure. Recommendations to accommodate bicyclists, pedestrians, accommodate safer public transportation usage with bus pull-offs. Those were all recommended in that 2018 Old South Road corridor study. There was a special town meeting request for for capital funding, which did not pass by a slim vote. Next, please. The ask would be is whether there is still support for those portfolio of improvements to accommodate all users along this corridor. Please let us know whether you support accommodating all users or not, or need more information about the portfolio of improvements along Old South Road. And that one does seem fairly unanimous with a little bit of question. Allison, just so you know, we didn't have two members participate in that vote, but that's why we're a couple short. So we'll move on to the next location.
Yep. And then Mike, this actually contentious with you.
Oh, and this one's mine. You all might be familiar with the signage along bike paths that we've been discussing recently. The state does have a standard for stop signs to be installed alongside paths at the crossing of intersections. Drivers do still need to yield to pedestrians. There also is a local bylaw that gives that drivers must yield to both pedestrians and bicyclists. Next, please. We'd like to gauge your support of whether removal of stop signs is supported or whether stop signs for bikes on bike paths is supported, not supported, or you need more information about whether. Do you support stop signs? This is not the removal, but just having stop signs on bike paths. Whether you support having stop signs on bike paths, removing them, or you need more information about that. And it will be on a future meeting agenda, I'm sure.
I think it's a little, just can I say something? I think it's a little unclear because the picture we show is showing clearly a road and a bike path. I think what BPAC is talking about is all the driveways and the other things that are going that you're forced to stop at every driveway. So you go down one bike path and you'll have, you know, 24 stop signs. You go down another one and there's two stop signs. So it's inconsistent. The cars think they're supposed to, don't think they're supposed to stop because the bike is supposed to stop, and so they blow right through you. And so I think that this is kind of hard for us to answer because we aren't at the level of granularity we need to be to have the conversation. You know, if we, if I look at that, I'd say, yeah, it's a, it's a road, you should stop. But if I'm going down most of the bike paths, Old South Road, you take your life in your hands going down the bike path there because the cars come flying out in front of you. They don't even stop. They just don't even look at you. They're looking at the cars. So anyway, that, I think that's, it's hard to answer this because of that for me.
Thank you for that feedback. I think I've discussed this a lot with our consulting team. I think we'll follow up and to be to be continued.
Do stereo. Other communities have this problem. How do they handle it? I mean, we seem to be going around and continuing circles. And I'm sure there's a solution that other people have found.
Yeah. We'll hold that off just for just for time because I know some people, we're going to lose people a little after five o'clock. Very fair comment. And that we'll, we'll address that as part of a subsequent agenda topic and go through that. So thank you all for the feedback on that. It's, our team is well aware that this is a contentious issue and isn't going to be solved in five minutes. So we'll move on to the next set of polling. And I believe these are just related to the safety countermeasures that Zach went through earlier. So Allison, is Zach handling this or are you handling?
Yeah. Yeah. And maybe I'll just close with the the locations we've gone through. We want to take the feedback that you've given us here, take that into consideration. It's really helpful to just understand some of the polling polls from you so that we can understand what we need to give information on and not, and how we tailor some of the countermeasures that we apply. So I'll pass it to Zach to talk about revisiting just the general countermeasures. Thanks.
Right. So I know we went through all the countermeasures pretty quickly earlier on, but I, we wanted to make sure that we had a chance for you all to weigh in on them. And this might feel like a bit of an interesting exercise for you because you might go, how could I possibly tell you if I support a roundabout if I don't know where you're putting it? But what we want to understand from you is how you feel about the level of appropriateness for these countermeasures for the island generally, and just your level of support for the countermeasure generally. So if you can try to the extent possible to take off the visualization of a roundabout in any particular place and just think about the countermeasure itself, the benefits it might have, any drawbacks you might see from a local perspective, and try to answer that way to the best that you can. That will be the most helpful for us because we're going to be thinking about these, first as appropriate to the location or appropriate to the island, and then second as appropriate to the location. So we can work through those together with you. But just want to make sure that we're polling this in not a continuation of the previous projects, but as sort of a standalone item. So I am going to open the polls now. We're just talking about level of support for roundabouts. Yes, no, need more information?
And while we're gathering those, I'll just make a note to our, our team and to you all that we're right on schedule. So thank you.
And we will go rapid fire through these. So if you have the mentee open on your phone or your computer, just keep it open because we're just going to keep going. Mike, is 12 our new critical mass? 13 now.
We should be good at 13, I believe.
All right. Intersection realignment. So again, this is sort of aligning the intersection geometry so that it's more predictable for folks that are navigating the intersection. All right. That one is looking pretty popular. Longitudinal rumble strips. So this is rumble strips that run parallel to the roadway, whether that's in the center line of the road or on the edge of the road. All right. A little more evenly split on that one. Keep going. Transverse rumble strips. So these are the ones that run perpendicular to the direction of travel. So if you're in your lane, you would feel those as you're driving through them. Pretty similar to the last one. We'll keep going. So access management. This is either closing off curb cuts or driveways or putting medians in the center of the road to restrict turning movements on corridors.
And just so you all know about the context of this, like Old South Road right at Nantucket, that's kind of what we're talking about. It's a Nantucket version of access management.
All right. Looks like lots of folks looking for some more information on that. Keep going. So this is side pads. We'll distinguish this from shared use paths being these are sort of right up to the roadway where the shared use paths have some sort of vertical delineation between the roadway and the path, whether it's grass or a fence. So we'll pull this one first and then that second.
Decision went dare not support a side path. Oh, the next one's going to be fun. Yeah. Thank you all for that.
All right. We'll do shared use path next. Very similar in application, just a slight buffer between the path and the road.
Zach, that looks like it's pretty unanimous too, which is sigh of relief.
Yep. Mike, would you be able to shout that comment for the folks on Zoom? It was a little bit faint for us.
Sorry. I think we're in the trailer. No, I, what I said is you can, you can support both, even though they're different, just as much. Depends on where it is. Those are the kind of questions that aren't part of these surveys that everyone's probably thinking the same thing. Some spots it makes sense, some spots it doesn't. Some places we don't have the land.
Yeah.
I mean, there's all kinds of different things that cause a yes and a yes for two different things that are kind of similar.
Good option for the toolbox, though, right?
You know? Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly. For the next sec?
Dedicated turn lanes is where we're going next.
Not that we have a wealth of these to lean on, but there are a couple of locations.
I worry about pedestrian safety with dedicated turn lanes.
These are case by case. So how do you say yes and no at the same time? It's a tool. It's a tool. Yeah.
All right. Looks like we're a critical mass for that one. Wider edge lines. So re-striping the edge line of the road just to be a little bit thicker.
I'm not going to whisper. Increasing visibility at night as an aging person.
Mike, what about the cat's eye program? Is that, I haven't seen that mentioned, but we did it on Pulpus and Sconset. Oh, milestone, sorry. And then we kind of stopped. Is that part of any of this stuff?
It absolutely can be, and I'll just let our team know that...
Because it's part of this question indirectly.
Yeah, that's not a polling question of a tool, but it's absolutely something we use here, and I think there's general support for those.
I mean, they work, and it's good. We don't have a lot of lighting, we're not gonna just suddenly have lit roads on Nantucket. That's not gonna happen. But the cat's eye thing is good, especially in the fog and these winding, you know, Pulpus especially has really been helpful.
Yeah.
So. And that's something that was never talked about on Nantucket until that time, so.
And we will have a portion for Q and A. Just to let our team know, our DPW director wants to chime in on this, and I'll ask Drew if it's all right if we hold that to the very end for questions about any of those poll results. So thanks, Drew. I was hoping you'd raise your hand. And I think that's all settled. Next one, please, Zach?
Yep, we're doing median barriers next. So this can either be a mid-block like you're seeing it now, or approaching a major intersection.
That's like traffic lights, Mike.
All right, looks like all thirteen are in for that. Do speed limit reductions next.
New Sconset sign.
I like the logo.
It is good, better than the old one.
All right, that looks like it's well-supported, have some questions. Go to the next.
Speed feedback signs next.
Mike.
All right. Mike, Brooke, a quick question. What do those signs cost that rate out your speed?
I, not an incredible amount, I wanna say right around $2,000, but I'm going from memory, and I don't know if I trust my memory. But that sounds about right, $2,000 per sign.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on, first of all, thank you all through that. I don't know if you had fun doing the polling, if it was a good thing to kind of have rolled into the meetings. That's, in my experience, has been something that people like to have to kind of break the meeting up a little bit and participate in that. So thank you for all that. Was there anything that we had talked about that you might want to address before we go into next steps here that maybe we should talk about? And Drew, Pat Nod, I don't know if you want to make your comment now about...
Sure, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond and ask a question about the cat's eyes. We are planning to put those out to bid shortly, and I have the list here, if you'll let me pull it up. We were targeting Pulpus Road, the remainder of Pulpus from essentially the Life Saving Museum out to Sconset, Tom Nevers, Cliff Road from Crooked to Maticet, Maticet Road, Humming Pond, essentially roads that are windy, rural, and/or have a speed limit greater than 25 miles an hour. So that is in the works.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you.
Were there any of the other polling results that surprised you, you were gonna ask a question about? We got a little bit of time kind of built into this, so again, thanks for the thrift of all this, but I think we wanna...
I do have one quick, Mike, on the Maya Comet, Surfside Drive, whatever. They didn't have realignment as a choice in the poll, but yet it was on the thing. I just thought that was, I don't know, I think that should be one of them because that's what it needed. It's needed that since somebody came up with it, and it never happened. And they put the new telephone pole right in the same spot, in the wrong spot, like everything else. So that, I think, the realignment of that one is really more important, I think, than some of the major issue intersections, so.
And it sounded like the circle option, the mini roundabout circle option, was a little more favorable than a four-way stop option.
A four-way stop's crazy. I mean, we need to stop doing that. That's what we're here for, isn't it, to stop doing things like that and have better options? But that spot is not as, it needs to be realigned. Even if we did a roundabout someday, that spot is, it's never been improved to even get to the next step. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That, to the right there where the, you know, other town owns that property.
Exactly. Brooke, did you have a question, or were there any questions?
I was just gonna say, my thought on roundabouts is, I generally favor roundabouts, but I think the community sphere of roundabouts where their kids are at school is real. And I think perhaps focusing on some other locations, like Surfside Road and Fairgrounds and Old South, and Fairgrounds at Old South, so people can get used to being in them more where there's a lot more people. We go through the one by the Stop and Shop all the time, and people don't realize how well it actually works for cars and pedestrians. And, but I think the more, the more we put them in less controversial places to begin with, will lead to a comfort level that may someday lead to the voters being comfortable with doing them near the schools. I don't think that we have support at the ballot box to do them in those areas. So I wouldn't spend a lot of time and energy in those two locations near the school to start out with.
Good thing, keep in mind, we do our prioritization plan, which is in our next steps, I'll talk about in a minute. Barry?
No, I just, but on that same note... I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I think on that same note, though, especially with your consultants, you really need to spend some serious time on getting aggregated data about roundabouts near school systems because, for instance, the one over in Hyannis, which has been there forever, seems to function very beautifully, and the amount of, it's actually safer than doing traditional stops along the way. I find, so I think that there has to be that educational component that has to start really early with solid data to support what that really means. Outside, and it's even more so outside of this community as well, too. Because I remember having sat through these in the past, and the things that were coming up were people's fears, but they couldn't be substantiated into what I call real-world values of what actually happens out there. So it's just something to think about.
Sounds great. Yes, Nat?
Mike, just real quick to add to what Brooke said and to add to what Barry said. The milestone roundabout is probably the next because it's not a roundabout, it's a rotary, three-way stop and a yield, what I call it. If that gets, you know, redone before all this other stuff happens, which is very likely because we have, in 21 years, talking about roundabouts, we have one in 21 years. Just, that's for everyone that doesn't know that. It's 21 years. So that's gonna educate the public because everybody knows what the milestone roundabout, rotary is like now, because they've lived here and dealt with it since day one. So when that gets turned into a true roundabout, that should be eye-opening education for everybody without having to, you know, come to meetings and see videos and test results and crash tests and all these other things that, the data stuff. It's gonna be like, wow, this is different.
Yeah.
And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Because that is coming.
I appreciate that, and you're right, it is coming. And just before we lead into the next steps there, Zach, I'll just let everyone know that the reconstruction of the milestone rotary and the roundabout at the milestone road and Nobodyer Farm Road intersection, which is also on the High Endry Network, those will be the next two locations for traffic circles, so point taken. Those are being prioritized and advanced and do address safety concerns. Yes, Matt?
Yeah, I agree with Lee Brooke that it would be smart to do these others first and build the, you know, build the support. The other issue I think needs to be addressed is with traffic modeling is what happens at other intersections. If we move faster at the intersection at the hospital, are we just gonna back up at Kaden Circle worse? You know, so we have to sort of realize there's some areas that we can't put traffic circles and we aren't gonna be able to move faster, and how do we deal with that? So that I think that's just a, I think that's a valid concern that hasn't been addressed yet, so.
Thank you all for your comments, and just to let you know with the next phase... Yes, Joe?
Can you hand him a microphone? Thank you.
To Nat's point about my comment, I think the same could be about four corners. I think that intersection, align that to Nat's point, I think it could slow down people enough to satisfy people for pedestrians, kids passing. I think that would be more successful and not have more backups otherwise. Just slow people down enough, but I think it would help accelerate and speed people up. I think also some of the longer trucks and, you know, CLD drivers, they would have to have, you know, not have to swing around, I think would be much easier in that area. And the other thing is when they did that intersection right off of Farm Pond Road in Vesper, there was like a little depression of an inch, inch and a half where they were redoing that. The amount of people that slowed down just that little depression, it was probably about 75% of the people slowed down, went through that depression, went the next time, then got to the roadway intersection. So it's kind of fun to learn about how little just changes in the roadway can slow down traffic and just make an easement, but not have this massive, like, white stripes and all this other stuff that's gonna go on, so, thank you.
Appreciate the comment. And just to let everyone know about the next phases, first of all, thank you all for your feedback, and I hope that you all did tell me that the polling tool did kind of work well, so we'll keep that in mind for future meetings. Next, please. Again, based on public feedback and your input, our team will begin writing an action plan to include a prioritized list of projects and programs that we will be reviewing with other town staff and the public this spring, before finalizing the action plan and incorporating recommendations into the regional plans and the local capital improvement plan. Next, please. And based on this afternoon's input, we will consider whether to have any follow-up coordination. I think we heard a couple of locations that are worthy of additional discussion. We'll schedule those in the coming months and let you know about those. Our team will develop a, like I said, the project policy and strategy recommendations for review this spring, and want to conclude by saying thank you all again for participating and providing valuable input on developing of our comprehensive safety action plan. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all to the consulting team, fantastic. And we finished on time. Early, actually. Can I say we finished early?
We're technically done at this point unless there's any outstanding questions. I would probably just encourage you not to try to solve the world's problems today, but you've gotten, at least now, people kind of understand where we're thinking, where we think that this will begin to work itself out. So just maybe keep the questions a little bit more...
I'm not doing anything. I just wanted to know before we were done.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
I got two service calls.
Nat, Nat, are you...
I didn't realize.
You don't get the opening. Nat, are you feeling, are you feeling guilty that I just even...
Does anyone want to have a motion to adjourn from the select board while these two go at it over here?
I mean...
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And same with the Planning and Economic Development Commissioner. Unfortunately, since I have Zoom people, we will do this by rule call vote.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Question is now made in second at this point. Christina?
Aye.
Yep, Mike?
Aye.
Brooke, I'll call them anyway.
Yeah, aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Abby? Might have lost her. John Kitchener?
John Kittle.
Might have lost him, too. Joe?
Aye.
Thank you. That's an endless, thank you, everyone. Really appreciate your time and energy for being here today. Thank you.
Mike, I got a comment before I lose it.
Thanks, folks. I'll talk to you later, Allison. Thanks, Zach, and Diana, and Drew.